I'm I'm here.
Recording.
Just had you registered. And it came with the. I always get by the time.
Oh, he's in one of your areas.
It's four months a day. Here it is. Why not?
Uh, but you have to communicate. That's a little bit. But. We don't know what we're doing. I was struggling. Back to the man. I was saying that I'm gonna.
Yeah.
You know, like.
I didn't mind wearing the one the.
Yeah.
Was that been a thing?
Yes.
That's the most.
It doesn't.
I went.
Sorry to go. That was. Right. This may have this is yes, this is. I don't I don't. Someone. Uh, on your face, electric.
Things over in your prison.
It must have got.
Yeah.
That's right. So. I just saw my. It's. You know, where it's all. Yeah. Everybody knows. Yeah. It was really awesome. It's just. Well, it's. There it is.
There she is.
You have a bunch of your puppies and.
How many so far?
Two. Eleven, but one just died in the beginning. From. Oh, it's probably. And. We're. Pass through it. And. That's good. He's got. Sure. We're. Figure.
Now, do we? We know the gentleman, the baseball.
Yeah, you got. You're. Are you calling us order?
I'm. More.
Oh, we're calling it. Sorry.
Attention. Constance.
Yeah, I will go ahead and call the select board meeting. The order. First order of business is organization of the board.
I make a motion um to, well, I'm nominating Eric to be chair of the select board.
A second. Oh, yeah, that's good. No, second's good.
Good. Yeah. Anybody else? Do you want to nominate somebody?
Nope. As as is the tradition.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think it's a good tradition to.
It is.
To always.
Good tradition.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, should we vote?
Favor? Yeah.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Over the phone. Harry, did you're meeting here? Okay. All right, so the rest of the organization. Um. Same board as last year. So I guess next would be a vice chair. Nomination's a discussion for a vice chair for the year. Is there anyone who'd like to be vice chair this year?
I nominate John.
See, I'm really good at that. I'll second. Is that, do you second the nomination? Am I just?
Yeah. Yeah. However, I would like to ask John, is this something you'd be?
I can do that.
Okay.
He's planning on being out eleven out of twelve months of the year. Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay. Um, so John is vice chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Um, we have those two. Do we have to do them individually or can we sort of discuss a slate and then vote on a slate as one? I need voting to vote on a slate. Okay, I think that'll speed us up a little bit.
Yeah.
Um. All right, so we'll just run down the list. So budget committee. I think John did a great job the last couple of years and.
I would like to continue doing that. I I think it's going to be a complicated one this year, but I'm ready for it. There you go.
I've got the runners here. Oh, okay. Uh, so CIP.
I'd like to do it again.
What's it okay? Um. We have heritage.
So starting in January, um, my work is gonna uh make me like forty-five minutes late meeting.
Okay. Starting next January or starting?
Starting this past January.
All right.
They didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Change the meeting.
That is an option.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's nothing sacrosanct about day or time.
Is that done?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We changed the budget meeting, as a matter of fact, a year ago because of Dimitri's options.
So I could um discuss it with them.
I can do that, but you have that prerogative, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if it's not going to work, you can come back to us and we can discuss that.
Right.
Okay.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'll put it out there. Thank you.
I was the planning board last year. I am interested in continuing that. There's though, I do have a suggestion. The planning board is likely to have some fairly significant um hearings this year. And I think that we should designate an alternate for the planning board in the event that I'm out of town or unable to attend, that they could still have a full slate of people at the hearing.
I I spent, uh, I don't know, ten years with the planning board.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to do that.
Is there anything wrong with us putting an alternate?
No, I don't believe there is. I think you probably should.
Yeah, I think I think having an alternate to the planning board makes a lot of sense this year.
I agree, John.
Thinking of alternates, I'd like to be John's alternate on the budget committee. I'll attend, but I'd like to be an alternate if he can't make a meeting.
Yeah.
Because you you're there anyway, always. I'm gonna.
I have to look and see if we.
Yeah, that one might be different.
Oh.
There may not be. The planning board in statute has an alternate.
Right, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I don't know that the budget.
Yeah. And I don't think the budget committee does, but it's been like two or three years since I read through that.
Mm-hmm. What if um we come to an understanding that if it's not allowable, though, Tracy will help by giving us the report and when you know, the report back?
If for some reason John isn't available to do it, certainly I can do that.
Because then we get the communication piece.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
It mean, yeah, if you can't vote, you can't vote.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Uh, but the planning board does have that in their enabling legislations. Um, and then we get the, so those are the required ones.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a new one that she, community nursing, conservation, energy. Um, the Johnston Drive has ended, so we don't need one there. Uh, the Mascomah Lakeside Park, the Methodist Hill has filed their report. We don't need one there. Uh, the MPAC, uh, the Old Home Days Recreation and the TIP. Uh. Last year, Kate did conservation, Tracy did energy, I did TIP. Actually, I guess I wasn't necessarily officially a select board rep, but I'm on the.
You're the resident.
As a resident. Um.
I'm happy to do conservation again unless someone wants to. We have some projects going on.
Yep.
I'm happy to continue energy and also be part of the MPAC.
If you want, someone on community nursing is likely to be a part of that.
Time to be.
Yeah.
What was it? Was the structure of the committee? I wanted to lose the town. After that.
We didn't, but she could always. And then communicate back and. Yeah.
It's fun, too. Let me.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I'm not sure there's a voting spot on there. We'd have to check how we corporate it. But but if you were interested in attending and reporting back to us, that would be excellent. Well, and it is your committee, so if you want a voting, but I can always change that. We can't, but but for tonight, we're not gonna go down that route.
But Emily's still gonna be.
Yeah. Emily's on it, yeah. Yep. Yeah, no, I don't see any issues with the committees.
Yeah.
Guys, this is gonna be a big year for them and having some communication back, I think, makes a lot of sense.
Also, Eva's not on here, but I do provide a report from here.
Yeah, which is, which is. But they are not a town committee, which is why they did not come on here.
But I wouldn't mind a brief touch on it.
Yeah.
When you have something to tell us.
Yeah, we'll just.
Okay. So what I've noted down for our slate is uh John is vice chair, budget committee, John, CIP, Tracy, Heritage, Alice, planning board, Eric, alternate, John. Community nursing Alice will be a liaison, if not a voting member. Conservation, Kate, Energy, uh, Tracy and MPAC, Tracy, uh, as part of the town committee still. But entertain a motion to appoint each of us as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. We got organized in one year. All right. Next up, uh, minutes of March fourth, regular and non-public.
I make a motion to approve that's granted.
I'll second that. Comments, objections? One more?
I'll.
Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Out of stance?
Me.
And, yep. And just to be clear, we're making the non-public minutes public.
Yeah.
Or we're not.
We're not sealing them.
We're not sealing the minutes. Okay. Board reports. So run down. You can go, okay, I'll make you go first.
I'd do it.
Don't worry, I won't do it every time.
My seat. Um, yeah, so Conservation Commission did meet the first Thursday of the month. Um. Not a whole lot in terms of projects, um, just some reports back and kind of recalibrating. Um, did not meet the prior month and I was not there in January. So looking and talking about stormwater and what folks want to focus on going forward. Most of the meeting was spent working with the folks on master plan part two, um, Steve on the board. So uh, that was the majority of the meeting in terms of content. But other than that, not new with going on other projects.
Energy, I won't uh repeat. Of course, we had a meeting with them, both a town meeting and even at our last select board meeting, so we have nothing to since then. We won't meet again until the end of this month. I think we all heard the results of the budget committee's meetings over the years.
Mm-hmm.
And uh. I'm looking forward to the next year.
Um, Eva hasn't met yet. There's a meeting tomorrow and I couldn't be at the Heritage Commission.
Okay. Uh, the planning board did have a meeting where the Whitney Hall project and the public safety building had their public hearings. There's some good feedback uh for the plans, particularly around some of the outdoor lighting and and the stormwater from Whitney Hall is not changing at all, but they found some new things. So there's a discussion around ideas for that. All right. Uh, next, town managers' report.
All right, on staff report, there really not much to report. We still have the two open positions in the police department, one police officer and one police assistant. Um, as we told you before, we're continuing to keep the police officer position open and looking, but we don't have any plans of filling that until June of this year. So we'll we'll continue watching that. Um, the only thing that really might change that is if there's a certified officer that comes to the door. Then we'll we'll look at that and make decisions when that happens. Um, town meeting, even though we'll be discussing this a little bit more in depth later in the agenda, I would like to just take a moment and thank everybody who worked hard to make this year's town meeting a success. Takes a lot of coordination from multiple staff and many volunteers and just a big thank you. Um, I also want to thank Lindsay Smith for all her work in preparation for both the election day and meeting day. They were coordinated well and I think things went well. With that update on Whitney Hall and Public Safety Building, um, Whitney Hall and demonstration or demolition and excavation still are going well. Um, the footings and foundation walls are completed. If you go by there, you can see those and they're beginning to prepare for plumbing openings in the foundation walls before backfilling. We do expect the foundation to be completed by the end of the month and ready for framing in early April. Well, exciting that that's moving along. Um, Public Safety Building continues to work through the final budgeting phases um with a goal of breaking ground in May. Many of the RFPs for subcontractors are open at this time. I did talk to an excavation contractor that had gotten the site work planned, so it's nice to see those out on the street and we're we're excited to see what those final numbers come back looking like. Um, as Eric mentioned, both site plans were reviewed at the March thirteenth planning board meeting. And as he said, they were good discussions. Both plans were approved, but there were some some good recommendations and discussions on lighting, stormwater and a few of those things that we will, we've actually already worked on them and done some of the the items. Um, Shed Street, I'm happy to announce finally that tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, they're gonna start the final demolition of the or demolition of the final building. And then they're gonna be working on um grading the site and preparing it for us to sell it. So that should be done, I'd say, within the next couple of weeks total, hopefully by the end of this week, but it might take a couple of weeks to get it all sorted out. Um, with that, we'll be talking tonight about some priorities that the board might want to see as we move forward with selling that property. I did send you an email last week, but wanted to update publicly that um we've got a new ambulance. Um, uh, in January twenty twenty-three, the select board awarded the bid for the ambulance in the amount of one two hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which was a little bit more than the CIP had planned and approved, but we moved forward with that. Um, Richard Martin and I scoured the bid documents that we got back even after the award, found a few changes, and we were able to sign a contract for two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight eighty-nine. We did receive a call earlier this month that there was a demo ambulance available with twenty-two hundred miles on it. Um, and right now, if we were not to accept that, our ambulance was about one and a half years out still. Um, looking at that, we were able to to agree to a purchase price of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two eighteen, which was about five thousand less than the CIP plan had approved. So I just wanted to let you guys know, we approved that contract. The ambulance actually was delivered last week. And it was nice to be able to to get a really nice ambulance, which was exactly the same thing that we had ordered for less than we attended.
That's great.
Awesome.
Yeah. Have we traded in our old ambulance yet?
It's part of that deal.
Yeah.
But we haven't given it to them because we'll be, we have to get some radios put in and lathering put on the ambulance. Equipment swap, so they're more than happy to let us have both of them while we're making that transition and then we'll get it delivered back to them.
Correct.
So. Little bit of update on DPW. Um, you guys may have noticed, most of the frost is out of the ground. Uh, roads are starting to dry up and our roads came through mud season in pretty good shape. We had our share of washboard areas from the freezing and thawing, but overall, we didn't have any major, serious mud issues in town. Um, we were slightly under for this winter on salt and sand usage and we are quite a bit lower on liquid usage um than we normally are. So that's a, that's good news for the town and early indication point that we'll be able to lift the road postings earlier than normal. So continue to work on that. Um, with the less than normal winter conditions, highway crews covered over thirty-two lane miles of tree trimming. This is necessary to keep growth out of the ditches, keep vegetation from hitting vehicles and allowing the sunlight to quickly thaw and dry out the road surfaces. So I'll thank them for continuing to work hard even when they didn't have the winter maintenance to do.
I think the condition of the roads right now is a testament to the good job they've done. I know there's some neighboring towns that are quagmires.
Yeah. No, they've been working really hard to keep them in good condition and. Um, DPW also hosted two water training classes last month, put on by Grandin State World Water, World Water Association. The first was water distribution best practices and the second was topics of cyanobacteria. They were attended by four Enfield staff members, including the health officer. And then highway staff right now are working on RFPs for the plow truck, the sidewalk tractor and the two thousand twenty-four paving. They continue to work hard in DPW. That's what I have for a staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for? All right. Um, on to the business. We have quite a bit on tonight, uh, starting with the Johnston Drive property discussion. Uh, so we received the legal opinion back, you know, about a summary that was.
Yeah, um, pretty basic summary was overall what the Johnston Property Committee recommended. Um, fits within the legal parameters and within the deeds that they were able to title search. You know, the road access issue, as long as it's kept to minimal use, the attorney felt that that was, that was okay. He did say it would probably be a problem if we were trying to make it into a a full-fledged beach with large public parking, but the few handicap accessible parking places and the service vehicles that would need to come in and out, he said that probably would not be any more than any normal. Like, he was pretty okay with that and thought that the the minimal use and just keeping that for open public access from the rail trail walk-in, bike-in was was a use that would be within the realm of what the title said.
Okay. Um. So I guess we have that opinion now, so we can discuss what we want to move forward with. First question, well, I guess there's a couple of questions. I want us to move forward with the recommendation of the committee, which was to sell one of the lots, the little tiny lot in the corner now, and then maintain the two lots as sort of as is. Um, and then the third lot stays in its current status until the uh the lease on that is and is re- reverts back to the town.
Now, which which do you identify as the third lot?
Oh, the the.
One of the first.
Number six is the one that would sell.
Yeah.
Five and four would remain as they currently are. And three would also remain as it is, but that's the one that currently has a lease, that still has a lease.
Okay.
So that we can't change that one now.
Yeah. Gotcha. That's a beautiful lot.
The whole property's beautiful.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think my personal opinion is that we go with the recommendation from the committee and I'd like to see the lot, um, sixth little triangle, we offered up for a public sale. And now there's a right of first refusal, but I think that makes sense in keeping with the recommendations of the committee and it's an immediate item that we can take action on.
I tend to agree with that.
I have a question.
I think we have a committee that has worked very hard. Uh, they have talked to many different people. Um, they presented, I think, a very balanced plan and I I think this is the way to go. I I do think that, you know, this may be the last piece of property that will ever become available to the town on Mascomah Lake. And I think it would be really silly for us to turn our backs on that. You know, I'm still cranky that we had the opportunity to buy a big sandy beach from Crescent Beach Hotel or Mascomah Lake Lodge after every building had been removed.
Mm-hmm.
And the town said no. There you go. Thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, this uh first right of refusal to buy lot six, um, is that a some kind of quid pro quo deal you made with a resident that takes it away from other public uh offers? How is that legal? I'm not sure.
Was a. It was a land trade that was done legally. The town got some land in exchange for the first right of refusal.
So the town has the first right of refusal?
No.
Uh, an individual has the first right of refusal?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll be looking into that, but I'd like the fact that it's going to public offer. That'd be great. I don't see how one person has first right legally.
It's pretty standard real estate practice.
What land did the town get in exchange for the right of?
Parking lot across from Pigeon Fifty-Six.
Okay.
Which was a rail trail and a little kiosk design and.
I'm in favor of it with a couple of notations that I'm sure you'll make when the time comes to do the RFP. Um, I'd like all legal expenses to be paid by the purchaser. Um, I'd like the clarification of access and parking to be a part of the sale so that we're not responsible for them using the right of way and that they're not going to be allowed to use the limited handicap parking. I I'd like a survey, which will be required, of course, to be paid by the purchaser. Um, and that the purchaser will not have any privileges particular to the land other than those that are available to any other resident of Enfield.
You mean the adjoining land or?
Correct.
You don't, right.
Because the purchaser may be a resident, but who knows, may not be a resident.
Anything else, Tracy?
Um, other particulars that have to do with the property itself, but aren't particular to the thought of selling six.
Alice, do you have?
Um, no, as part of the committee.
Yeah. Okay, so for that piece, it sounds like there's general agreement to investigate what a sale would look like. I think Tracy put forth some.
A few codicils.
Yeah, no, a few reasonable.
I'll do that and I do have the letter for first driver review and I will get.
Yeah.
I I'll get a legal opinion on that before we. But I just want to make sure we do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we'd want to see an RFP before it got released.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will bring one. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Are there any other comments on that particular thing from the public?
I'm just, on your comment about um purchaser of lot six, excuse me, uh, their access. I understand right now it's, it would become a landlocked parcel. Um. If it's some subdivided part, so their access would be the same.
It's already an independent parcel. There's no subdivision going on.
It's right here.
It it is listed as a separate parcel.
I know it was listed on the tax guide, but the deeds don't have it listed as separate parcel.
They all used the standard railroad release deed, but there is an individual uh property description for that property. It's just not on the site, I know.
Yeah, uh, so there. I'm just curious how their access would be then.
Same as you or I, which would be unless we're in a handicap vehicle, we're gonna walk or we're gonna bike.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give.
And that's.
I just wanted to clarify. I thought I heard.
And that's what trade, that's the, one of the conditions Tracy's saying to put on it is they don't get special access to the rest of the land, meaning they don't get extra parking.
Yeah.
Yes, Jean.
Um, I I just want to commend everybody for working on that and I think it sounds like it's a great plan. I just want to get some clarity and kind of a thought process. So you're saying that the person that owned the parking lot across from Fifty-Six that owned that, that's the person that has first refusal on this piece of property?
That's that's my understanding as I read through the document is that when they gave the town the property for the parking lot, the town gave them a right of first refusal.
Okay.
Which does not.
Standing, I just want to make sure that's.
So part of why it will go out to for public bid is to make sure the town gets the best price.
Mm-hmm.
And if they choose to match that, they have that right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
This is a pattern. So when we did Lakeside Park, we was, were not allowed to put trucks across the rail trail or the viper optics. And so we have, has the board thought about how they're going to get the true, I think it's true buildings demolished? Also, I would assume that town is going to mow it.
Mm-hmm.
So there's gonna be some traffic. It's all been considered.
Well, I think that's a good transition to the next decision we have to make is what to do with those buildings, whether to board them up or have them removed. Uh, my view would be we'd want to see the proposal again for that, one cost-wise and also the issue Steve brings up will potentially have a big impact on cost. They can only take.
But the legal opinion allowed, uh, said that occasional maintenance vehicles.
Yeah.
Could be part and parcel.
But Steve's asking a separate question.
No, that's what I'm saying. I think that should be deferred as well.
I was gonna say, I I agree with him. If we're gonna take a dump truck or something across there, we'll get that. We'll get that opinion. We'll talk to DOP and ATF and make sure that.
Right. That's right.
For the the mowers, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just a pickup truck with a trailer with a mower.
Right.
There's a road over there for regular vehicle traffic to access their cabin down the way, so those smaller lighter vehicles. Can access back and forth, but a heavier vehicle with a load will want to make sure we.
Yeah.
It's protected.
I wouldn't think those buildings are so substantial that they couldn't be taken down in smaller pieces, but we'll find out.
We'll look and see.
Yeah.
We don't say that on video.
We can call it fire trading.
There's a lake.
There is a question.
Oh, yes, uh Barbara.
Um. Am I on?
Yes. Barbara Jones is on.
I have to say, I totally support the recommendation. I thought the committee did a fantastic job. I don't have any complaints about that whatsoever and um I thought Nate did a great job. Um, my one question, the audio is not that great here. My one question is. After all of the kerfuffle about getting down there. Um, the road, which is. Mainly on my property, but that's beside the point. The road has been destroyed. Um, and if you, I have two questions about that. If this person is the a mythical person who is not on the butter. Um, chooses to use that property, what, how how do we? Um, manage having people come and go daily, back and forth? That's one question. And my other question is. Um. I mean, I I think the road is bit gonna basically be breaking people's axles at some point, so if you're. Bringing these trucks back and forth, there has to be some kind of maintenance. Not the kind of maintenance that would steal a property, but some kind of maintenance on that road to make it. Usable.
If you're coming.
I will stand here and say.
But I I do recommend that we just put some gravel in that that area. You know, we ha- we have four of those parcels, so we're we're partially responsible for that road as well.
I also think.
I appreciate you saying that.
I think on the gravel, I think um. The big benefit to me, I mean, the gravel isn't just maintaining people's vehicles, it's also the safety of the lake. Because right now it's kind of washed down and it's silting into the lake, which we know contributes to that one, so. I think just as a general practice, making sure that it's got a good bed on it so that we don't make the lake worse.
But I am, Barbara also, are we're both aware that. If you start maintaining that road, you could acquire that land, which we do not want to have happen. Um, just for the safety of your own vehicles. At this.
It does that way, but we'll.
I I was sticking to the topic at hand, which is the sale of six, and then I thought we'd get into the overall property a little bit.
Yeah, I think there was consensus on the sale of six that we'd like to see an RFP brought forward. It would go to public bid and.
Can we do that as a motion?
Usually can I get a motion?
Sure, I'd like to see an RFP for the sale of lot six, uh which we would review. And um incorporate some of the points that I made if the group agrees with those. Um, and then um we will deal with that accordingly. Uh, certainly, I would expect that the. Minimum bid would be no less than the assessed price of the property.
You guys can decide when it comes in and you're going willing to sell it for whatever it comes in.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put that in the.
Yeah, I don't think that should be in the motion or.
Okay, fair enough.
The the assessment of bids is a independent action.
Okay, fair enough, so there's more motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion on the table? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. We'll see an RFP at a future date. Okay, so. Then we will continue the transition to lots four and five, which are the two lots that are currently. Under the town's full control that have the open space and are being mowed. They have the issue that uh Steve Patton brought up, which will be cognizant of. Go ahead.
I just wanna kind of reiterate, I think where you were going.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be that we overly secure the buildings that are down there now. And I have asked the police chief already to kind of monitor use before we put a lot of money into. Mixing those or tearing those buildings down or doing anything if it's. Very, very little use out there, I think it's worth the select order. Redisessing whether they want to take the buildings down or not and. If they're gonna keep those parcels open in the way they are or what they want to do, so.
Yeah, now if they're if they're secure and safe, they're not a safety hazard, I'm comfortable with that.
I I like the word over secure because as Kate and I both know, uh the locks don't work.
Yeah.
The door was open when I was on.
And it was open when I was down there too. Um, a couple of things I would mention, I'd like to see the um. Couple of spots for potential handicap parking not be developed at all, but be roped off. With a sign that says handicap parking only um right at the beginning of the property. So that someone who goes down there doesn't even go past the rail trail, that's their problem for getting out. We can't put a sign at the head of the road.
We don't own anything on this side of the rail.
No, no, I didn't mean on this side. I meant at the top of our.
Yeah.
The town's parcel of the.
No, I do think we're gonna make a little area there and then put some no parking signs.
I just didn't want to, I don't see any need to grab a little off or any of that, just it's strictly handicap and seasonal and. A sign that says handicap parking only. And then my other point being, I'd like to see an annual review of the property use each September. By public hearing so that people can have a weigh in on the use of the property and how did it go for the summer and. Um, we can talk about it at that point, going along with the suggestion of the committee that said. That we would basically sit on it for two years at least, uh but I think an annual review makes sense.
I wouldn't put September on it.
No.
Maybe October. Could be a little later, could be through fall foliage or something like that. Uh, but basically, an annual review for the board to gather and have a public hearing on how did it go?
I would like to see us really be cognizant of the message we got. From town meeting about budgeting and so do the locking, do the gravel and the basics and then. Put it, develop what you have for ideas and put it through the budget process so that we're not trying to drive the. Full train. I mean, I know it will go through operations and they'll make the proposal, but I'd kind of like to kick it over to budgeting. And maybe there's a grant that comes along and that becomes moot, I don't know, but. I guess I don't really, I'm very comfortable with all of these suggestions that the committee made. I just think forcing it through in terms of dollars. Feels uncomfortable.
And I agree with Tracy, that's kind of what I was saying. Let's watch it for a couple of years and see if it's worth us spending.
Okay.
I do think it makes sense to uh invest in two or three picnic tables.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Two picnic tables.
What about them?
We should have some down.
We may have inherited them.
Yeah.
I have a question.
I would think we would put up signage about the the swimming and that you're at your own liability, et cetera. I think a formalized sign that says that is crucial. Uh, the lawyer could weigh in on what it's supposed to say.
Of course, maybe we shouldn't try to micromanage that.
So you know, if it is, if it is a public parcel and it's open to the public, then we're exempt from liability.
Ah, good.
And we had a question from Barbara.
Yes, I'm wondering about the A-frame. It sounds like you're gonna just put a bunch of locks on it and leave it there. Um, what is the purpose of keeping that building?
The the per- the short term purpose would be to see how the park goes without expending town funds for removal prematurely.
Well. So you're saying that that building at some point may have some use to you?
No, we're saying we don't want to spend money on its removal if the lower cost option is available.
Okay. You either remove it or you don't remove it, so what would be a lower cost option?
Burning it down.
Suits. Securing it would be the lower cost option.
Well, anyone could break into a building. I I feel it's a public hazard personally. I I think there should be a vote on that.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Can I just um put my stake in the ground saying I'd like some friendly signage, please?
What, could you could you say that a second time? What kind of signage? You can, we can work with her on signage.
Friendly.
Okay, yeah, uh, there's there's gonna have to be some signage developed and the town manager will make sure to include even that conversation.
I appreciate that because right now it's just kind of nasty negative stuff, so. Kind of like Lakeside.
I don't have an objection if it if you work it out with the residents to have a sign closer to the beginning of the road that says. Private road as we saw it identified in the legal analysis. Uh, there there is not one there now, no.
They do, but we can, we can work on.
There is one there now.
Oh, is there one now?
It does say private drive, but nobody pays any attention to it and they do.
So an official metal sign perhaps would improve the situation?
Yes.
I think that would be fine.
Or walking.
Yeah, we're we're getting into the weeds, okay.
I think we're getting a little bit into the the micro manager. I think the message for town Fred is to. Evaluate securing the buildings, signage, come up with a with a plan to implement the recommendations of the committee and. You know, put in particular view of the cost of it and then bring that forward for implementation. Is that a fair summary?
It is a good summary.
What's that?
Yeah, I just remembered I wanted to ask something. Uh, will the uh report from the attorneys be available to the public?
No. No. No, it's legal. So that's no.
That's enough.
He just said no.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to bind a future board potentially on parcel three? Like, or do we just leave it until such time and then it comes back? Okay, so we can have it in the minutes that are our intent is to honor. The recommendation and that would be there for the record.
Wanted to put it in the record that this is what you would recommend doing, but yeah, the.
Okay.
Future board at the.
I figured we couldn't bind them, that's why I asked the question, but I think it'd be good to have it in the record that we we do support selling parcel three at such time it's. Lease expires.
Have a question.
Yes, yes, Barbara. Do you have another question, Barbara?
Barbara Jones.
Okay. Barbara Jones, your hand, your hand is still up. I wanted to give you one last. Did you?
Yes. I do have a question. Is there any way for an official of butter to look at the um legal re- reports since our deeds were the ones that were? It doesn't seem totally.
But that's how the state law for legal opinions works.
Okay.
Okay. Unless there's more from the board, we will move on. We gotta work instructions there. I will say again, thank you to the Johnson Drive Committee. You did an excellent job, put a long slog and uh. I think we're getting a good outcome from it.
And you guys set the bar for other committees.
Yeah. Okay, next, we move to Methodist Hill Property RFP discussion. And um the only thing here says we're, you know, we will, we will certainly take comments and listen, but. At this point, we're evaluating the RFP that's gonna be put out, not really rediscussing the committee's work or the cost. So happy to listen to people speak, but we would like to keep it germane to the RFP. Um, like I said, put together an RFP for us that. Basically does what we had suggested at our last meeting. Are there comments from the board?
I just will let you know, I got a red line copy from Nate Miller of a couple of suggestions, so once the board goes through it, if you guys would like to look at his, we have it ready to pull up.
Okay. I have one small um sort of statement, which is um. When referring to a potential buyer, I think it might be better to write buyer rather than developer. Change that term because we're not necessarily looking for a developer, we're looking for a buyer.
I I was gonna make exactly the same point and I thought in line one where it says developer, perhaps we could change that to developer slash purchaser.
I would leave developer out completely. We need to say purchaser or buyer.
Throughout the document.
Just, yeah, and then everywhere.
Purchaser throughout the document, I'm fine with that, sure, absolutely good point.
Qualifying language invites qualified people and firms and then when you get the quotes. You can, when you call it buyer, it ruppers back to that. So. That would do that work.
Yeah.
Are there other comments from the board? Are we ready to see Nate's suggestion? Let's go and see those.
It's the name of that room.
Uh, we're here.
Uh, is that others?
Is that African Road?
That's African Road, yeah, that the one that cuts through and.
Yeah.
Is actually labeled on Lebanon map says African Road, yeah.
You might have to open it in.
Yeah, you're gonna need to open it and we're seeing it.
Hopefully we can do that.
Yeah, we have to, you have to word install that. It's usually the online.
If not, we can talk through it.
That maybe was one that I had, so I wasn't used to.
Okay, so I think we can go through this relatively quickly. If anyone, if someone has an objection to one of the red lines, please speak up.
Can you just make it tiny bit bigger, actually? Sorry.
I'm with you there.
You're in a browser, so you should be able to.
Don't shift and.
Well, I actually, I just.
Oh, that's beautiful.
So the first one was to switch to a maybe, which looks very appropriate.
And you make a select word meaning bucks, yeah, thank you.
Um. The seventy-five acres seems reasonable to me. The third one is that. Would that be separate to the town's? Is that's as an official class six road that's in perpetuity and unless the town gives it up.
The class six road that's there is transverse to the property. And require, if you were to maintain it, you have to transverse the entire width of the property to get to the class six road on the Lebanon side.
No, but what I'm saying is, is it necessary to put it here since it's already a town class six road?
I'm, I have the same thing. I don't think it is because it's the town's responsibility to do it. I know there was some. Concern on the other side of the border on the match lane.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
I guess you could put it in there just to say we are planning on maintaining that.
Yeah.
Certainly, if you want a copy when we're done, you can also get a copy. You don't have to try to piece it together.
And I guess since you're here, Nate, did you, what was your?
My 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 only, my thought here was just to put it in writing that there's no intention of breaking the town's classics right of way. Um, that 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 right of way would maintain continuity throughout the robbery.
So that they're paying attention to the fact that.
Yes, yeah, it just, just to have it somewhere in writing.
Oh, I think that's worthwhile.
Okay.
But we only have control of the right of way as as far as our border, right? And then Lebanon's is up to Lebanon, that's right.
They're under dispute with the orchard.
All right.
That's a whole other.
I I also caught the same note of of not saying six vehicles, just saying public parking.
Well, does he left the six? But it's approximately six, so they could come in with a proposal for two, they could come in with a proposal for eight.
Well, and it's also.
Asking.
Prefer.
Yeah.
You know, we're not saying this is what your proposal has to have, it's saying this is what we would like to see.
Remind me, did we, was was that, was the thick, the recommendation, like maybe?
No.
Okay.
It said public parking.
Public parking.
But the public access.
Yeah, because you don't want people like.
I think that provides a nice scale for somebody. We're not not looking for a big parking lot. But looking for someone that's more than two cars.
The committee said small parking area.
Right, and that would fit that as a suggestion to provide public access, if that makes sense.
I would say I put six in there because that was a, that was a discussion in the committee, though it didn't make it in the recommendation.
It just um done a nitpicky, so after a project, it needs a comma and then pre and development needs to go to bother.
I like the idea of just providing the flexibility, as you wrote in the RFP, of um. Not designating exactly the number of acres, but instead just leaving it somewhat. not designating exactly the number of acres, but instead just leaving it somewhat open. If you put seventy plus, I think that's fine. That, that's a little flexibility.
Man, I.
It also, it matches the recommendation.
Yeah. The, what was the edit? If you go back, he put seventy.
That's specific seventy-five.
Yeah, I mean, I, given the overwhelming preference from the, the residents there, I then put it in seventy-five number actually makes less sense.
That's not what the recommendation.
Can I just say my reasoning for that? Development of three to five houses. If you took the high end of five houses on five acre lots, that's twenty-five acres. Why would we define seventy instead of seventy-five?
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's minimum of five acres.
Right. I just wanted to provide a potential user to a little flexibility.
Well, I think, I mean, this is just an RFP, so they can propose as is. How others feel. Do you want to leave it at seventy or change it to seventy-five?
I'm fine with it at seventy-five.
Yeah. I like seventy-five.
So you have a straw poll of seventy, but you comfortable with that, Tracy?
No, I like the flexibility aspect.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, do you want us to vote on the seventy versus seventy-five? Are you comfortable with the straw poll?
I like the seventy plus.
Okay.
That's written.
So we're, we'll, so far that's the only, um, red line that's been objected to. Why don't we keep going through all of them and then?
Is there a comment next to this cross out? Or do you want to?
There are. Yeah.
Do you want to just say the?
I just gave you that context. So I mean, the, 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 that comment is just like, I don't think this makes sense here. Let me know if you have any questions or.
Yeah.
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 I also, I also recommended not using the word bid here, uh, anywhere in there. There's a couple of instances of bid just because you go on to find a series of evaluation criteria, only one of which is price. So it's not a true bid in that context. It's a proposal.
Yeah. My, my comment, I think putting a, if you have, if you have questions and then a contact name, phone number might be.
Yeah, I can do that. There's a contact in there.
Yeah.
We just put it in online.
Do you think it's appropriate when someone calls you asking about it as they naturally would, that you would identify the legal expense and costs? In other words, would you give them that range or would you leave that as open that they'd have to guess at?
For what?
The amount of money that's already encumbered, if you will, for the property.
Oh, it's changing.
I know it's changing. That's why I'm saying it's changing. So do we just let that go? Without any indication that, uh, we're not necessarily trying to achieve market value for the property.
I think so. I don't think we want to put any numbers or prices.
No, I'm not suggesting numbers or prices, just implying the flexibility aspect of things.
Yeah.
I'm just not interested in being a fundraiser for the people that gave up the property. That's all.
You guys will get the choice of what you're gonna actually accept at the end.
And you don't have to take the highest proposal.
Oh, no, no, I understand that. Yeah, no question.
I guess my comment just here on the additional information, um, it might make sense to say public, there's, uh, public information is available and contact. So you're saying in the affirmative way, you're not saying like we invite you, but you're not saying like you're totally responsible. I don't know.
I mean, they will anyway.
It's, it's not the top, right?
There, there is a process for committing questions.
Right. I mean, it's here, so maybe we just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do take phone calls and stuff.
Yeah.
But we try to be really careful. If we answer a question that's even substantive, we document it and post it online so everybody else can see it.
I like that. Okay. I like that one.
I think that's a limitation.
Yeah.
For a developer. That's not allowing the property to be looked at by individuals.
Yeah, I think, I think the if necessary is, is needed. Specifically because if, if just a private citizen makes an offer, they may not need professional.
And developer will be changing to purchaser.
Correct.
Yes.
But I'm, but also like, I don't think somebody necessarily needs professional references. If they say, I want to buy, pay the town a ton of money and put it under conservation.
So here's a question though, like you can't just go to the bank and be like, I want to buy it. You have to show that you have adequate funding. So do we put a mechanism in there where you have either references or a, a proven funding source? Or do we award it and then hope it works out?
I think that's for the discussion later.
Work and that's in the bid as well, that we can call and discuss with individual buyers before we.
Yeah.
So I think if you guys say, you know, we'd really like to go with this person, but we want to make sure they're financially viable to do that, then that's when we start digging into the financial information.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good change.
Uh, there's a, there's a comment actually right there. This is, this is probably the most substantive one, trying to figure out what the evaluation criteria are. I sort of laid out in that comment what I understood them to be based on that sentence, but I think it might behoove you to be a little bit more specific. If my line of thinking is what your line of thinking was in that two highlighted line section.
Like what?
Proposal price qualifications and requirements of the RFP. Does that mean four things as I've laid out there or not? What, what is that? What does that actual two line sentence mean? Because that's what pretty much your proposers are gonna go right to that section and be like, how are you, this is how you're telling a proposer how you're going to evaluate their proposal. And it's a little fuzzy.
I like the little flexibility that's involved. I think exactly what you've written is an excellent memo for the select board to have to eliminate us on things to look for as if we didn't know. But I don't think it's necessary to put it in the RFP.
So when I evaluate something even for here, I tend to do things like I will do a, a visual scatter plot that shows like the different, like, say we're doing a committee and I want to be able to visually see how we're mapping it out so that we're being fair and including a group of people. Um, so I do kind of that, but I don't necessarily want to block everybody else into my way of thinking. I guess that's where I.
Well, that's why I made it really vague and broad. We're gonna look at proposal. We're gonna look at the price. We're gonna look at your qualifications, probably especially if you're a developer. And, you know, did you follow the basics of the RFP? Did you give us your name, your phone number here? There's not a lot of detailed items that they have to put in this RFP, but.
I do think one of the strengths of our particular group is that we're all from very different backgrounds with different ways of thinking.
So I generally think you should reserve the right to conduct an in-person interview, whether you do so or not. And then the bottom bullet point is duplicative with the second bullet point.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then this particular line is what I always put in RFPs. I think you're trying to say that above with that shorter sentence about equal opportunity. I tend to be more legalistic in what that means, but.
Actually, the one above it is required.
Okay, there you go. It's basically saying the same thing. But you could take that early then.
I think that one above is actually broader.
You're saying we put down everything.
The one above is the one legally required. We don't need to overcomplicate it.
I don't think so.
Yeah. There's a few comments here and there that, that you can pick them up out of Microsoft Word real quick, like.
I had a question. I think we've got it through your memo. Um, I had a question under evaluation criteria. The first paragraph after the bullet pointed section is a little confusing to me. The town may award a contract based on proposals received without discussion of proposals with the developer. How do you award without ever talking to them?
If you decide to do that, you can. That gives you the right to do that. When you sit in your meeting and you look at five of them, you can say, we like that one. Award it. You can do that.
Yes.
And since it's.
You can decide not to do that. And this is also end of, you know, we put a lot of RFPs into this, so we, we buy fire trucks. We do ambulances without talking to people. All of that.
Okay, that was the point you were trying to get at. All right. That point makes sense. It was a little confusing on initial reading.
Pretty much it's written in a way where you have the right to or not to talk to someone before you award this.
Your bet.
You don't have to talk to all of them. You can just talk to one of them.
When are we just, I know the date that night because. Yeah. And what are you thinking target wise for?
I, I would probably recommend we put this out for a month whenever we release it. Wait to see what's back.
For longer than the sixteen days that you initially listed.
Yeah.
I agree.
Is, is thirty days enough for?
I think thirty days.
I think thirty days is a pretty long RFP process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I try to stay in that three weeks to a month.
Exactly.
They're not gonna do a full workup. They're gonna do a quick feasibility lot money.
Okay, ducky.
So we had, um, do you have a question?
Yeah.
We'll start. I can't, I need to, this might position down.
Carrots and drink water.
So talking about dates made me think of, uh, two things that are kind of like, I think the clock is running for two different procedures. Because at the March fourth meeting, we heard that the original property owner that contacted the town to talk about redeeming it. And the first question is, does that, what is the, what clock starts when the landowner talks to the town about redeeming the property?
Well, probably from this meeting, if we get the go ahead, let's start working on a sale, then we'll notify them that we're gonna sell the property. That'll start their clock legally running of their timeframes to redeem the property. And we'll run the RFP concurrently with that. Their time maybe will be longer than the thirty days. But with that, that gives us time to come here, start our discussions. And so I plan on running that concurrently just so when their time's up, we can make a decision and move forward with whatever the select board would like to do.
So the prior owner has a legal right to redeem the property?
Yes, sure do. If we're gonna sell it, they have legal.
If we're gonna sell. I see. And what is that? What's that period? How long a period of time is that?
I think they have thirty days once we let them know to let us know if they're gonna do that or not. And I believe it's forty-five days, but don't quote me on that to actually make the redemption from the time we contact them. So.
But you don't think it's more than forty-five days?
No, it's not a real long time.
Yeah. So it, it would, so, uh, since it's concurrent with this, this would be thirty days and they might be forty-five days.
Yeah, we'll notify them immediately as soon as we say, yes, we're going to sell it.
Okay.
Second question is, is it, is it fair to say that the original property owner, when they're notified, takes priority as a matter of dealing with the landowner before the RFPs are given serious consideration? You can run it concurrently. But don't you owe it to?
They have the right to. Yeah. If they choose to re, to redeem it, they do.
They get it.
It's not our choice.
Correct.
Right.
But I'm just saying that they have, they have that thirty to forty, forty-five days.
Yes.
To either fold or hand you a check and that stops the RFP process.
Basically, they're unfolding themselves. They've already done the fold move, but they have one more chance. One more.
Yeah. If we put the RFP out and they redeem the property, then we have no property to sell. So we, just like is in here, we won't pick anybody.
Okay. And then third, last question that I'll say then, I missed the, your discussion about when the proposal will be public.
We haven't had that yet.
Okay. Then, then everyone has noticed that been dealing with things that end in twenty-twenty's for you.
They're just highlighted.
Okay.
To be changed. We always highlight them in there because those are the things we have to change right before we put them out.
Okay, there I be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so just always sort of, and I know we have come to these meetings before, but trying to keep this piece together. How much land are we talking about?
It's a total of a hundred acres.
Okay. And so is the RFP, is that going to be to sell the whole thing or sell part of it and keep part of it?
Sell a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, on the, on the open, one of the opening lines, it says develops three, three to five houses. So that's implying that you have to construct the house.
No.
Versus house lots.
It's prefer.
I can read though.
It's there.
Those bullet points are just what the preferences of the board based off the recommendation of the committee, but we're opening the proposal for any any scheme or idea that you want to.
Committee discussion, there was actual house lots and houses built. That's why I was curiousness. I was worried to do.
Yeah, so we, we tried to put together an RFP where people can bring forward any proposal they want. You know, uh,
Okay.
From a hundred percent conservation to. Okay, it's the whole thing.
Disneyland. You've already heard my Disneyland.
We'll select a proposal with the committee and the town.
It's not gonna be Disneyland. I'm bulling.
Okay.
I think a motion to go with the edits, um, we just agreed upon with this. I would like to see it be seventy-five acres. That's my motion.
I'll second that. The discussion of the motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes four to one. So when do we need, you will probably want us to pick a date for you guys to have it ready and release it by. Is that?
You can, or I can just get it ready as quick as I can and get it out of the door. Did all the other work that's going on. I think. I think that's fine.
I like the current idea. Of letting go of getting them, the, the prior owner started at ASAP.
Well, they, they can be notified immediately because of that, on our choice to sell, not.
Get that process.
Decisions been made.
I assume that their forty-five days ends with a physical check, not just a, we want it?
Yeah, they have a certain amount of time. I think it's thirty days, if I remember right, to let us know they're gonna redeem it. And then there's a certain amount of time, which I think is another fifteen days or so to actually make the redemption. And then it's over and.
Uh, yes, uh, I think I see the first name Jean. I can't read this. Last name. You say your name and go ahead.
This is Jean Bagraskey Hinshaw. Um, thank you for that discussion. It was very helpful to clarify. And I appreciate the comments made and the edits made to, um, you know, change it from having kind of a very strong development feeling because of the developer word. I think change, making that shift, you know, kind of gives it a different feeling. Um, because this is a unique situation. And so I don't know if there's any sort of statement at the beginning that you could say around what I think Ed was just saying and a few of you about, you know, while there are preferences and maybe it's already there, um, but while there are preferences that any type of proposal is, uh, welcome.
Yeah, the, I think the, the first statement, it basically says it invites qualified people and firms uh, to submit proposals for purchase, development and or conservation of a town of Enfield owned one hundred acre parcel. And it goes somewhere. So that was intended there to make sure that all of those possibilities were included.
Yeah, thank you so much. And again, I really appreciate, uh, Yeah, thank you so much, and again, I really appreciate, uh, sensitivity to the language, because it's very important in how people perceive it. You know, and, and react to it, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Alright.
So this land is gonna be sold for whatever the town has. Everybody gets to. Five people look at the land and they all say. Yeah, I'm gonna give you ten bucks, because that's what you ask. And then you pick the one you like best out of this one.
Yeah, whatever proposals are submitted, we will select the one that.
Guys, I was a little confused.
Well, the amount can be higher too.
So, so the amount of money, the town will recover only money owed to the town, back taxes, the interest. If there are other expenses the town takes, takes, undertakes, like if there are legal fees or something. The town recovers all of those, any money in excess of that is returned to the prior property owner.
So you're essentially gonna put this out to bid?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now I get it.
It's like a bid with a proposal component.
Yeah, but you get to bid on this, but see what you have to do with this line now.
Right.
Okay.
Here's what, here's what we would like.
Right.
We're trying to make that real clear, because I could write an RFP that says you have to do this, but we're saying, tell us what you wanna do. This is what we would like to see done.
So it's not like buying a land with covenants on it?
No, no, we may end up putting them in the deed if they. Put a proposal forward and we wanna make sure that they do what they say in their proposal, but we're not putting the covenants before.
So you guys got your work cut out for you.
Or maybe they come up with a bunch of money and we've done all of this work to do the right thing and.
Yes, it's, it's, there's still a lot of work to go, that's correct.
I th- I think what's important here is that we're not in the business of taking people's properties, so being respectful to their process and.
No, I don't understand this, I've listened to my child a lot.
Oh, yeah.
But what at a prior meeting? There was some talk about the. Now the town only gets what they have and. I'm, I'm good now.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Just on your hand first.
Paul Miyako. Logistics question, is the town required to survey the land prior to the sale?
No. Sharon, did you have a question?
Yeah, hi, I just had a clarifying question, any discussion? Sorry, did everybody hear that?
It's a little, it's just a blower is.
It's a clarifying question, um. So I'm just confused, because I understand it's a hundred acre parcel, but then you guys were sort of saying seventy-five, seventy-eight acres.
We were outlining the preferences from the committee's report, which was for the majority of the land to be put into conservation. And a small portion of the land with roughly a twenty-five percent development, seventy-five percent. Conservation, we're putting that preference into the. RFP, so that people bidding would understand that that was the recommendation given to the town. And will be part of the evaluation criteria when, when bids come in.
And then, to add, I think one of the things we've been doing as an organization is moving a little more away from. Thou shall not towards thou shall or thou shall try. So getting it into kind of the affirmative, where you're giving it guardrails, um, maybe with some latitude, but you're not. Doing a punitive, or we're gonna tell you how to do your business, yeah.
And, and as with everything in terms of the preferences, that's certainly not a hard and fast number, somebody could come back with a proposal with seventy acres and that could be the best option that we could. Right, anything else on Methodist Hill? Saying nothing, we'll move on to the, probably the oldest property discussion in doubt.
Dear God, please.
Shed Street. Uh, so we've, we've gotten a good, uh, update that Shed Street's gonna be demolished, and so it's time to start talking about. That property and, uh. Several year old recommendation that that be sold, which, uh. I don't know if we need to have that discussion, does anybody have an opinion other than that we should have an RFP and sell it in general?
I'd like to start with the RFP that came out about a year and a half ago.
Okay, well, uh, so, so we're agreed that an RFP is the right, is, is the right, well, because if somebody wants to talk about. Doing something else, this would be the time to do it before we start talking about an RFP.
And keep it for a second DPW?
That's sure not.
I don't think so.
Any interest in time?
Should we make a motion that we intend to do?
No, we don't need a motion, I just wanna make sure if somebody had an objection to that approach, there were a new board and a new year, this is the time to bring it forward. Uh, I don't hear one, we can discuss, uh, an RFP for DPW that would be. Similar to the one that was just presented for Methodist Hill. Uh. I think, try to make me from wrong, go ahead. I read through the other one before, and I would recommend we move away from that, it was extremely. Complex to the point that I don't think we need it, I, I like something similar to Methodist Hill of. Here's kind of what we would like to see you do with it, but. Let us know.
That can be the starting point, that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that's fine.
I think it's a lot easier, we can make it, I can make these changes and make it very similar to this with a preference list in there, and. I guess that's what I was looking to, our genitis, this is what your guys' preference is.
My only preference is that I don't feel we need to limit, uh, as we did at Methodist Hill. To a specific access to the rail trail, I don't feel it's necessary, you can go around the corner and it's just great. Um, I would, but this is a different plan, which we have discussed. That property around the corner, I won't bring that up right now. But I don't think we need any specific public access through the Shed Street property to the rail trail.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we?
However it's worded, I guess what I would like to see shine a little bit in this RFP is an emphasis on creativity. Um, so that we're, you know, um, it doesn't have to be the same old boring proposal, I don't know. It's gonna, that's more of the spirit of how it's written, so if we are saying, you know, we're willing to accept, you know. Proposals for a wide variety of mixed uses or something, I, I'm not saying it. That's the wording, I just, I wanna be able to see, maybe someone comes to us with age and place housing or cottages or condos or. They have a coffee shop that's open to the public and the residents get, you know. I think they just, I wanna be able to see something that respects the character of that residential neighborhood while making it. Getting it back onto the tax rolls and, uh, I think we have a duty to do something about housing here too.
And we wanna preference housing?
But, I think it has to have some kind of.
I, I sort of, I, I agree, we need housing, I mean nationwide, that, that's the case, it's certainly the case in the Upper Valley. But I, I would hate to at this point start narrowing the focus like that, let's see what we get. I agree with the broad strokes that we, I'd like to see some broad strokes.
Yeah, Brad Rich, how large is the lot, just curious?
It's roughly two acres.
And it's, uh, town water and sewer?
Town water and sewer, roughly two acres, if you want the, um, well. On a housing comment, if you look at Ann's place, that's on a smaller lot, that has like eleven units. It's a nice example of what can be done on that scale of a lot.
A little more than two, it's about two point seven.
We have talked to a developer that put, put forward, not a written plan, but he showed us what he did in other places and then put forward a plan of about. Twenty housing units.
Wow, wow, yeah, it's a gorgeous. Piece of property for development.
It is.
Rail trail in the backyard river behind that.
Yeah, walking distance to.
Walking distance to schools, bike ride to the schools.
And we own it outright.
It's a marvelous piece of property for someone to think of.
One, one thing I wanted to ask about is, um, do we want to include sort of expediency as one of the criteria? Because what I would not like to see is somebody to present a great plan, buy it, and then sit on it for ten years.
I don't think we need to put that in because I have precisely that in my head as an obligation for the Methodist Hill property.
Well, but we, in the Methodist Hill property, we did say some of our preferences.
Right.
So could we add it in as a, a preference, so that people know it's gonna be a criteria? I, I guess I, if you know you're not going to let somebody sit on it for ten years, and there's no chance you're gonna give it to them, shouldn't you tell them up time?
Well, and it's something you could do on either of those, once you make the decision as well of. They have what they call reverter clauses, where they have a certain amount of time to make a certain amount of progress. Or it just reverts back to the town.
I see it as part of the discussion phase.
Yeah.
When you go back to the.
But a preference could be to have it developed as soon as possible. Yeah, I mean. I think if you're, if you're looking at preferences, I think that'd be one I would have, would be the person who's ready, you know, essentially ready to go, I mean, you're talking a couple of years, no matter what, just from a.
Sure.
Well, we can make them put that in the bid of when they would expect to develop it.
Yeah.
Just put it just like that, when would you expect to develop it?
Yeah.
Yeah, without saying what our parameters might be.
And I, I know others have said others, I would be perfectly comfortable saying that housing would be a preference, um. Given the. Yeah, there's a lot of concern around workforce housing, I'd even say that a proposal for workforce housing. Could potentially be a preference over other ones. Throw that out.
I tend to agree with John, I just wanna leave it wide open, I really wanna see some innovative proposal come through. And I don't wanna predict what that might be.
What is, is that the, what is it zoned there, it's the R one?
Special.
Oh, it's that, no, we did rezone that, didn't we, and it passed.
The wood is on.
Yeah, there's sort of a comment, would you require that the person who purchased it, who developed it, develops it? Follows the existing, the, whatever is current for the zoning for that's area?
Um, any proposal would presumably be evaluated in the current zone, and we don't have other zoning.
Right, is the town owns the property? You can.
The town's not developing it, so we would sell it and then they would develop it, so they would have to follow zoning.
Because you still own it, well, you could.
No, they'll have to submit their plans on the current zoning law.
No, that. It would be, and if they needed exceptions, it would be on their burden to get them, the town's.
Like any other private developer.
Correct.
Exactly, it will have to go through zoning and planning like every other development.
Now, that being said, say they wanted to make a proposal and get a conceptual to see if it would ever fly, that would, that's something that's always allowable, right?
Yeah.
Always conceptual.
Yeah, they can make a proposal based on acceptance and permitting of what their proposal.
As any purchase can be.
Hi, this is a question in your, um, Mr. Young, you wanted to keep it open and certainly that's, that's an option. And you had talked about workforce housing, is, you know, thinking about your master plan for Enfield, really. Part of that is workforce housing, um, part of that is senior housing. Um, and I know it's hard for developers to kind of do that, um. But I wonder, could you? Keep it open, but make some, some statement about, you know, some preference for a percent. Oh, it could be, maybe workforce housing, because I think what I see in Enfield is I know at least, I know one person who can afford a house here. Um, who works here but lives, had to buy a house someplace else. And I also know a, a person, Melanie, who used to work at the library, had a really hard time as a young professional in this town. You know, finding a place to live, um, so, you know, just going forward, I would ask you to consider. If it's in the master plan, how is that gonna go forward and come out in some of these programs?
Is it, is there a way to write that in that, that you would feel would not be limiting, but would still?
We're going around in circles now.
Right, yeah, you're right.
We, we've got a sort of, I could.
What if we say aligns with the vision of the master plan?
I don't see any harm in letting a developer present whatever they think is worthwhile, it's their effort, not ours. Other than to read what they submit.
Hey, uh, my name's Dan Regan, I respect all the different points of view that I heard, but. One of the things we've been hearing loud and clear over the last couple of months is also the taxes. So don't we have an obligation here to try to get the most possible for this while balancing it with the master plan? And for that reason, we'd want, we want to leave it very open.
Yeah.
And I think when you say most, um. A lot of people immediately think of the initial purchase price, mo- most for me is the total. Package of future taxes and.
Well said.
Yeah, so I just wanna, yeah, be cognizant, like we might set, someone might come to us with a creative proposal that isn't the most money for the sale price. But come to us with something that's gonna really put more taxes on the books.
Yep, I absolutely agree.
And I mean, it's a one, a one-time gain is nothing like getting a larger, long-term ones.
Absolutely agree, and I think by leaving it open, you give yourself the opportunity to look at that broad picture.
Ed, do you feel you have what you need? I think so, it's gonna be a pretty open, big RFP.
So I agree with Dan and Tracy.
Okay.
I've been wanting to sell this baby for like twenty years.
You got what you need, you'll develop an RFP and bring it back when, when it's great. This is exciting.
Yes, it really is.
Alright. Uh, next, uh, town electronic sign policy. So in your packet is a draft. Policy we put together, um. Long story short, it allows, um, use of the electronic sign in front of the community building for town information purposes. Of course, emergency purposes, and then for open public events that will be held at the community building or used part. That's it. Um, there's one thing to really. Caveat when you're talking about public or use of public space like that, it creates a First Amendment right issue. So. You start opening it to other outside groups and other things around town, you can't limit who can and who cannot vote to that. So I think we need to keep it fairly tight on who we allow to post to there.
Yeah, I don't see why we would allow anyone other than official town notices.
Can I give an example?
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna give an example because this is one, um, so I'm gonna put my friend's mask on my hat on for a minute. Um, so the food pantry moves around, because we're, we're homeless, um. Since COVID kind of, and we move in, through the grace of the town, we move into the parking lot, into the pavilion and where, um, we've been in the police station and it's. It's a challenge, um, when there was a weather emergency, I called and asked and initially got told no. And I, I understand the, the desire not to have everybody putting stuff up, but in this case, the police department when. Would be the ones who would be delivering the food, so it was kind of one of those, like, just trying to make it so that you don't have to do this extra work. So, and I don't think that's, um, and that was one where normally we would have been physically on the town property and used part.
The other one that I wanna point out a little is, for the last year, we've been caveatting out a little bit the Lions Club and the Lionesses. We don't wanna necessarily just preference them, but we also removed their sign to put this in place. So I don't think it's right not to allow them to have a place, or we're, or we should allow them to pull their sign back up there, which. Was not the prettiest looking thing, so. To be able to put the, the corned beef and cabbage dinner that's gonna be hosted and open to the public to come to and things, I think is. The right thing to do.
I respect that, and I certainly wanna support them, but was there anything in the original, uh, documents? That required them to have a sign there that we have to continue to support?
Believe they're in the document.
Okay.
So, it would be your guys' decision, but it was there for a long, long time.
Um. Can, what is the context of us looking at this policy, and is it just? Is it revising something, is it creating something? It's brand new, and. After probably nothing or something happened, or there was confusion?
No, there was a lot of discussion in the zoning, when we got a zoning variance, because the. As of right now in the town, your sign cannot change messaging more than once every twenty-four hours. So we had to get a variance to be able to put this sign there and use it. The primary discussion during that whole zoning thing was. Who can message on it, what messages would be allowed, and then when they actually acted and wrote their official opinion. It was my opinion that it was the Lions Lioness in town could post on it. In the actual opinion that came out, none of the. None of that was in there, we just got our variance, and. So, we've had a few things, what really brought this to light, I've been thinking for a while, I needed to write one, and with everything going on, I haven't been. And then the candidate's night happened, and it was. And then the candidate's night happened and it was, can you put this on? We told them no, because we weren't letting. Outside town events post on there. And I thought, you know what? We need to write this, have the discussion, decide what we wanna do, and then we can implement the policy.
So under this policy, could we give them permission in the future? Do you think there's anything written here that allows us to do that?
Yeah, it would be an open public event if it was hosted at the community building or Hughes Park.
So the notation ought to be just a little bit clearer if it's hosted at the Enfield Community Building.
And by in line one, yeah.
Point three on the list, on the guidelines, would seem to be not part of the signage policy, but instead is a. Policy of the building. So I don't know why that needs to be on the sign policy.
Well, these are the ones that can write to it.
It says, open public events held at the community building must be non-commercial. It dictates what the building will host. It doesn't have anything to do with the sign. I think a, a commercial entity, we wouldn't want them posting on the sign.
So say you have an art association.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that that line seems to refer more to the use of the building than to the use of the sign.
No, it's writing policy guidelines.
Policy guidelines, so it refers to the use of the sign.
People can, yeah, okay.
This is a guideline that referred back.
There may be, so you can't go.
So you can't have a wedding in the community building.
You can, but you wouldn't publicize it on the sign.
Right, but it says. Held at the community building must be non-commercial, community-oriented, and accessible to all residents. So you can't have a wedding there?
You can.
Well, you can't. But then anyone can walk into the wedding off the street.
Time out, no, you can't advertise on the.
This, this is purely about. Who can post on the sign? It has nothing to do with the use of the building. It is saying that if you have a public event. That is non-commercial, community-oriented, and accessible to all residents, you are allowed to post on the sign.
But that's not exactly what that sentence says. That was my point. That's not what it says.
It's a guideline.
I'd be happy if we made the sense a little bit longer.
Well, I think though, let's go up to line two. Town messaging includes official announcements, community updates, emergency information and relevant. Information from the town of Enfield. We are not saying that that is the def- townwide definition. We are saying. That that is the definition in the policy guidelines, right? So you have to look at it within the framework of the document you're in. And not as a townwide statement. We're not saying townwide. These are going into other, where these are the specific policy guidelines for the electronic sign usage.
Over, so let's take that to make maybe in draft two. Can you check it? Number three? Yeah, okay. David, did you have a comment?
David Faye. Yes, many of you have participated in, in previous years and this most recent one a few weeks ago. Uh, the, uh, candidates forum, um, candidates night, you know, if you wanna call it. Has been a popular public service event like, uh, friends of Maskoma. Uh, and held at the, uh, uh, community building, uh, which is, it seems to be an appropriate size and, uh. With some work on the acoustics, it seemed to be doing well as a, for a hybrid, uh, event. The last couple of years, we've been unable to post, um, notices on those signs. People probably get tired of the, uh, the listener posts. But, uh, it, it would certainly be something that, um, I think is beneficial for the community.
Yeah, thank you.
And according to this document, you would be able to do that in the future.
Yeah, right.
There we go.
Can I ask a clarifying question, just to see what you guys think? So. Like the P T, say the P T, the PTA uses it for a kid's thing, it's their, like, quarter sale. Because that's, is that considered commercial? They're a nonprofit? Or is that considered fundraising? So that's not allowable on the sign? Do we allow?
That ties in exactly with my question, which is, what about the fair? Which is a commercial enterprise when it occurs, although it benefits the Lions.
Yeah, it's, I would consider that non-profit. I would consider a PTA event held at the community building to be. Non-profit, open to the public.
So, okay, that's non-commercial, okay.
Maybe we should clarify that as well.
Sorry, he's behind you a second.
Nate Miller, can I ask a, a, I don't have a copy of the draft, but I'm quite interested in your draft. Are events at the Enfield Village School? If the Lions Club is holding an event, let's say Frosty's Craft Ward at the Enfield Village School. They're not allowed to use the sign. They currently are, but they're not. I will just say, I don't think it's good public policy to make. To reserve one particular nonprofit agency or entity, the Lions Club. To have personal billboard use over a taxpayer-funded sign. I think it needs to be more equitable than that. I don't think there should be car bounds. I don't think that's. Appropriate public policy, and I'd just like to note that on record.
I, I do have one request for consideration, which is that, um. As part of policy, we follow our own town zoning ordinance and only change the sign once a day. Unless there's some urgent public interest.
You mean the, but the series could sell, because that.
No, 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 the, the zoning ordinance policy, zoning ordinance is that you get one changeover per day. So we would not flash between the time and something else. And I know Ed and I disagree on this.
Yeah, I don't think, that's the whole purpose of it. Otherwise, you're just gonna have one thing up all the time.
Yep, well, one thing per day.
The whole purpose of the ordinance was so it wasn't going to be like the Maskoma Regional High School where cars slow down. Because it's turns and they wanna know what the next message is.
And we, and, and we certainly, on the, on the zoning side, have heard lots of feedback of not wanting. Lighted signs, the change, the compromise that was found with, you know, light, lighted signs are the reality of the world today. But not having them become. Having change was a compromise to allow anybody to have a sign that's like. But balance that with, uh, you know, the residents' desire to not have. Lots of lighted signs flashing at them as they drive along.
Didn't they already get a variance?
They, they did, however, worth setting a policy.
Okay, I, I mean, I just, what's the point of having the sign? I'm like, tear it down, make a bunch of people happy.
I would guess, I would say on a, I, I find this sign valuable. I. I, I don't, I'm not sure I've seen more than one valuable message per day, just in general, and I think. And I do think that obviously there would be an exception for if there's some need for public notice. You know, and then, like, if a road is closed. You know, you change the sign the moment the road's closed. But I will put that out for consideration to, for you.
I liked, um, Roy's theory kind of about he timed how long the sightline was. And made it so, I mean, it won't always work, right? Timing wise, but you made the distance, the school ones like. And that's very different. This is, I, how many seconds to, he has this.
About fifteen seconds.
So it's, and it's the time.
And I think we actually do thirty-second changes.
So I guess I'm more invested in having the changes, but having them be a lot longer so that you don't get in the habit of. Me, if you sit in the middle of the road to watch that sign change, it'd be another hobby.
And, and, well, it also put on there that we've been watching to see if there were any traffic issues because of that and. There has, but not.
And people need. I live there and nobody's slowing down for the sign in my estimation. They're still gonna run you over on the way to.
We don't have it flashing enough.
Just two minor, um, lines, one in three. When we say Enfield Community Building, if we're gonna say community building, the capital B elsewhere, we should probably just keep it aligned. And then on line four, um, where it says PSAT Coordinator, that's. I think we should spell out that it's Public Safety Administrative Coordinator. I agree. And just.
That was one of my points to get rid of the acronym.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying, right? We're so used to doing it, but we're trying.
I was wondering about point number eight. Any misuse, et cetera. Isn't that, are we just slapping ourselves on the wrist? The only misuse, misuse can come from us.
No, because you could lie and say it's a public, non-paid event and that.
But we're going to interpret that according to our own policy. We won't put it up there unless it meets our policy. So why do we need that line that says, if we make a mistake, we're gonna slap ourselves on the wrist?
It's not saying us. It's saying, it is what she said, if someone lies, comes to us and they're, they're.
You know, lifetime sign ban, baby.
It just gives us some flexibility to say, no, we're not putting your message down.
Okay.
Like you told us you were giving away this, but you were actually selling.
Any lies will be slapped on the wrist, okay. In my innocence, I thought, eh, this will be a ten-minute discussion.
I don't think we do any.
No problem.
Hey, at least we aren't just like stamping stuff, you guys.
You're right.
You're right. So we wanna slightly rewrite on item three. Was there any other substantive?
I'll bring back some tape.
The, the only side comment I'd make is I'd love to see the town logo go on the upper sign. Can we consider that? It is, okay.
It was planned, it's just. Um, just one question for me. Is there some number of maximum, like, do we say, like, when you hit X number for the day, like, five?
We decided not to do that.
Okay.
That we would.
That's fine.
Play with that as we move on.
And so, it, sorry, yours doesn't fit this week.
I think that's also a reason why we asked them to give it to us a week ahead of time. Had too many of them, we could put some up this, some up that day.
We could determine if they're lying.
It could be a really rapid impulse.
All right, so it's gonna do a draft, and next time we can take five minutes and just. Now go through. All right, uh, next item, uh, town meeting discussion. This is intended as a, a debrief. Or comments in town meeting. People have them.
Can I tip off with, um. Just location. I know that we've gone back to the school. It's tradition, uh, the. Parking on the muddy and like up on the playground, like, I never imagined people were going to drive onto a children's playground. So we have a parking issue like we always do downtown, but just, um. That begs the question, is that an appropriate venue? And then we got a lot of comments from how long it was. About, wouldn't it be nice if we were in the auditorium, which we have talked about before. So I wanted to throw out there. Can we consider the auditorium? And, you know, I gave someone my SUV and they drive them up there. I don't know. I just wanna think about that for the future because we're gonna have a beautiful new space in Whitney Hall, but I don't think that's gonna be big enough.
No, two hundred and fifty.
And you're still gonna have yucky, some probably yucky metal chairs some places, um. Can we make people more comfortable in a place with more parking and just either. See if we can find a creative way to bus them or do whatever. Also, the sound quality, I think, is better in the auditorium, and I did get some feedback that with, like, chairs moving and people shuffling. Uh, the kids were the MVPs for best behaved, I saw that. That's my venue one.
Other, other thoughts on that?
A similar one to the sound. I was wondering, do we own that sound equipment or did we lease it?
We rented that.
So next year, wherever it's held, can we get a microphone that's more flexible than that one? Uh, the difficulty of adjusting that to certain people seemed ridiculous. If we could get one that is on a. An extenuated flexible lead, then you can move it up and down.
If you do it in the high school, they own the sound equipment. We don't have to pay. Like, it might offset that cost, might offset, like, running a bus or, I don't know.
I will say that I thought the lawyer was excellent. His willingness to speak a little more than just yes or no or something. Uh, I thought his input was, was quite good.
And he's been with us for many years.
He has, but he knows that. This year he had, he was asked some tough questions and he was willing to speak on them, and he did, and I, I appreciate that.
Without bias.
Um, next year, I'd like to see a video recording at all possible. Somehow, I'd like to see the, the meeting recorded. Um, and a couple of other things. Next year, because we'll have one project maybe completed, but one underway, I'd like to see a photo board of projects. That we have underway, and perhaps there are other things in town that need to be, uh, put on a photo board. Um, and then my last question would be, and this is more for Lindsay. To ask her if we can get speakers to, um. Stick to the question at hand.
She did try, very.
She did try, but, and she has the right to, to be tougher. It is, she did a great job. And, um, I, I would just wanna emphasize our support for her. To be as diligent as she needs to be to help control the timelines.
I would say she vehemently defended people who weren't even treating her or talking to her very nicely. I thought some of the behavior was appalling, and she still made sure they got to speak, and I thought that was pretty admirable.
I want her to know that we're behind her a hundred percent as far as supporting what she does, and if she feels. That she needs the support to control some of the discussion, she has it, at least from my end.
So you can do that, and me and the attorney did talk to her about a couple ways that we could have spent a few things up.
I thought overall, I, I, I was impressed with, with, with the meeting. It, it was got off along certainly. But people really kept at it. Um, obviously, there was a lot of motivation to, uh, wait for the, uh, petition warrant articles to come up. But I thought the, the budget discussion, while there was, you know, a lot of anxiety about budget. And we all have to recognize that, but I think people were, they stuck to the point. They were generally polite. I, I spent, you know, I tried to walk around a lot just saying hello and, and people were very, very pleasant. So I think it was really in the tradition of the New England town meeting, you know? People, they grappled with tough things and they got to know a little bit more about the town.
Yeah, I think the, the budget passing and the budget discussion was a great example and reminder to me of, like. Front-loading with information. Dimitri's presentation was so thorough and, and anticipated questions. And anticipated discussions. It was clear that he spent a lot of time thinking about that and. I saw it some, I saw it several times and he refined it after each one, using like an iterative listening and, and improving it. It was my first one, so I don't know, like, I don't remember if they were ever that long. Yeah, in, in years past, when I wasn't on the board, maybe I left a little early, I don't know.
They noticed if we sneak out.
They would notice if I snuck out this year, yeah. Um, I thought it went really well. I. I thought about Lindsay's role a lot. I think, um. I think she handled it well. I think that there's a struggle between making sure that nobody feels silenced and making sure that everybody feels heard. And then, you know, letting things get off topic, and I think that that's a learning process for me and probably her as well. And that's all I got.
I, I don't think I have anything to add from what was.
Not particular to this, but I had a question for you, Ed. Did we determine which articles had to be on the town meeting as opposed to warrant articles that could possibly have been voted on Tuesday? So were all the warrant articles that we voted on Saturday dictated to be on Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds something we have to. Special ones that are allowed to go on Tuesday.
Yeah, zoning and planning, I think, are the only Tuesday articles.
And just thinking about the feedback we got from folks, you know, while we were listening to each of the articles. I thought one of the things that was really helpful for me, um, you know, we've heard a lot of feedback on the budget, but in particular in the short-term rental ordinance. I was very interested to see the number of people who wanted to see further development or further thought, because it was, that one was very, very close. Um, and I don't wanna be like, well, it's a hard, because to me, those people who had those very strong questions, they. Aren't a hard no. I'm not saying press it, but how do we, as a board, listen to them and those concerns and. And what weave it into some of our work this year?
Yeah, no, I think that that came through to me as well, that, that that's something that there are a number of requests for more data or just. More explanation, more education. I think at a near future meeting, we should have. But we, we should have it on our agenda to discuss that and decide a path forward, which may be, we've got a road, it may be, you know, something else. Go ahead, Jean.
Um, yeah, that was a long one, and I hope we don't have to do that again forever. Um, but anyways. So I'm just curious, like, the warrant articles, and I didn't have anything to do with writing these, but the ones that were petitioned. That ended up being not binding, not legal, whatever. So does our town council. Review all the warrants and make a determination whether they are binding or not binding, and then in turn, does the. Town notify the petitioners that those. Articles are not binding or legal before town meeting?
We don't notify them, but we did have an open select.
We don't notify them, but we did have an open select board meeting where we discussed each and every one of those prior to town meeting.
Is it possible, um, I know this is an after step, but for me, I felt like, and yeah, I know, I was sort of part of some of those discussions of the petitions, but I wasn't the writer, that after we went through that process, I'm thinking, okay, this was crazy. These shouldn't even have been on this warrant whatsoever and could have chopped off, hopefully, a couple of hours or so.
They have to go on the warrant once they're petitioned.
Yeah.
Oh, we're really odd when you put them on.
That the town can contact the petitioner and say, we're advising you that these are not legal or not binding?
No, because it's the twenty-five people that signed as well. And, and my view would be, I don't think it's appropriate for the town to make a statement like that to a petitioner. I mean, one of the purposes of petition warrant articles is for citizens to be able to put what they want on the warrant.
Right, but for me, I'm feeling that it's not really the town making that, it's coming to the legal council for that. But, I mean, I just felt, for me, I felt like, okay, this was a total waste, and I would hope in the future and, you know, I'm maybe a tiny bit guilty and should have said something, and I know other people that signed it said to me after the fact, well, I thought about that and I should have said something. Um, so I guess I think that maybe there needs to be some more education about I don't know if the town can let people know or something that can, maybe there could be a training session on warrant, written warrant articles or whatever, so that people are not spinning their wheels, taking all that time and then finding out in, in the end that
Well, I have two things on that. One, like he said, they're not binding, but they're still advisory. So if that, if that would have passed overwhelmingly, the select board, I think, would have to seriously discuss that and say, it may not be binding, but is that something that we wanna put in place? Two, in the town office, we are always open and willing to help you write any warrant article. And if it's way ahead of time and we have time, I have no problem talking with town council to see his opinion on something before we have it on the warrant and the petitioner didn't want it on the warrant, because we're more than willing to help with people to try to find the right wording to get it done. We're not here in the town office to, you know, push our opinion to be on the warrant article. We're here to help the citizens and the select board get the things forward that they wanna get.
But I think that would imply that people come to see us before they start collecting signatures. Once they have the signatures and have given the document to us, our hands are tied.
And I've done that with folks in the past when they've been like, hey, I have this idea. I'm like, you know what? If you wanna make sure that it's binding, this is the process you could go through. Now, we're not gonna get you a full legal opinion and write it for you, but we could say, you know, uh, we found out from the lawyer, it isn't, right? We're not necessarily gonna do someone's work, and a really good example of that is SB two. That warrant article has specific legal wording. People have wanted to put that up before, come and started with the wrong wording, and I went to Lisa and, um, because I do want people to be heard, because I think in every one of these articles, whether I agree with them or not, there's a bit of a truth and there's some ideas, right? And so we learn from our neighbors through those things, so we hear them, we understand, and we feel frustration, and, and we learn something together. So I'm, I'm willing to do that learning, but I agree, like, it's a little bit of a bummer that upfront, and there's no way to change it after the fact.
But I think, Jean, uh, as John just suggested, it is an excellent idea for someone who has a petition idea to come to the town, take advantage of the resources that are there, including potential legal review, which is there or can be done before they go out and get twenty-five, fifty, or a hundred signatures. And then they would know, perhaps they have to change the wording, perhaps they won't do it at all. Take advantage of the town resources, they're paying for it.
When people do warrant articles like that and they're not binding, yeah, it does, I don't know, send a message to someone out there of ideas, but personally for me, I don't care about spending another seven hours on a town meeting again.
I'm just gonna say, you were talking about the audio. The biggest audio issue you actually had was the person who was running the audio.
Yes.
Because if you leave the mics live, then wouldn't have been a problem. But every time the one on the left was being used, it was dead because she took it down. The ones in the public, you could leave live, you're five feet away from it, believe me, you had to be six inches from it, you knew it. If your mic had been live, there wouldn't have been a problem, other than the feedback. But if you left them live, you wouldn't have had a problem with any of the mics. Every time somebody wanted to talk, the mic was dead.
Was that an instruction that we had given her?
That's what they've been doing
Who's done it for years? The gentleman who did it before, who was very good But this gentleman has been doing it for a number of years. Whitney knows the guy.
I just, a couple of comments. One, I thought Dimitri was amazing. It was the third time I had seen that presentation as well. You might not have agreed with everything that was presented, but the way it was presented was fantastic.
We required Dimitri to submit to tenure. He's stuck.
Second thought, Lindsay was, was great. Um, however, one of the things we've heard loud and clear, we want more people at town meetings. And seven and a half hours is not the way to get them there. We all know that. I've been very impressed with all the select board meetings I've gone to, budget committee meetings and other meetings, how well they are managed. And one of the things that we do is we limit how long people can talk, and we say two minutes. Can we do that, or is that illegal to do at a town meeting, to say, it's a two-minute, the clock starts and and then respectfully, and I think Lindsay handled everything respectfully, say, excuse me, your time is up. We're gonna have to move on to the next person after we answer your questions.
I think legally you can do that.
You can, just treat everyone very, very equally was my understanding, which is why I tend to tell people in advance, like, the target is really three minutes for me, because that's about how long someone's gonna listen to you.
I, I don't wanna
Yeah.
You're just interested in that something, but we can definitely pass on to Lindsay to look into.
But I don't think we can tell her how to do it.
You may wanna watch out.
Yeah.
Why I say that is because I believe it was Londonderry School District had a three-minute on their school district. It went to court and they said, no, it can't be that short.
You can't do it hard and fast.
It, they said, yeah, you can probably hold it at five, but you can't hold it at two, you can't hold it at one. Yeah, three is on the edge, so you might wanna say five.
So I think I've seen Bridget's hand up for a while online. Bridget, agree?
Hey, I was just gonna note, um, so when you were talking about the mics, the gentleman who was running them was kind of just sitting to my right. I think his biggest challenge was because he was sitting low on the bleachers so that he could get up and down. He just couldn't see who was starting to talk, but when he did leave the mics live, just like right now, when other people in the room are talking and you guys are trying to talk, when, for us sitting here, and even on the speaker some, it picks all of that up, and it's really hard to hear the select board members or the people at the table speaking. Um, and it was hard, I know, and I'm not begrudging anybody, because it was seven hours, um, when snacks were being eaten up at the table. When those were on, it was, it was making it hard to hear the people who were at the microphone. So I think, you know, he was trying to fight feedback, he was trying to fight, giving you guys the ability to not have every sound heard. Um, but also as far as the recording, Jim was there, Bonner, from Enfield Channel Eight recording, so I don't know if he had enough to go all the full time, but, um, he, I did see him there, so I think, you know, whether or not it's just a partnership or we have our own setup in the future, but if people are, I would keep an eye out for that.
Thank you, Bridget.
If you do set a short, uh, sorry, David Fagan, uh, if you do set a short, uh, timeline, uh, those three or five minutes, it's also possible for the body to extend that, so it's just a request.
Well, many people don't realize that the longer you talk at such a meeting, the less people are gonna listen to you.
Did you see me clapping for you?
I was so thankful every time you got one. I think it needed some time. I'm gonna move this question unless there's something new that we haven't A lot of good feedback, actual for that. Uh, it was a good town meeting, and, uh, you'll have another good year ahead of us. Okay, strategic planning and discussion.
I'd like to make a suggestion, if I might. I'd like to postpone this discussion. I'm sorry, I know you need it. Um, there's a number of items still on the list, and it's eight o'clock. Um, I'd like to see if we couldn't postpone strategic planning review for the next meeting.
I, I guess, were there any changes other than the one I suggested? Oh, yeah, did you? The one Send them in color though, right? You got it sent to you in color, the strap printed is not on. There's a, it's a whole bunch of red line. Okay, yeah, I did not print that out. Yeah, no, this is, I didn't either, and I just scanned through it.
So I made my edits and then didn't send them to you, that's my bad. Um, I just had some questions without, like, format ambiguity.
Okay, so we, we definitely need to discuss this, um, with the pleasure on Tracy's suggestion that we put this on the next town meeting. How big of a pain is that for you? Next. It's not, we just don't officially have one and the staff in, but, but I'm not, are you working on it until you guys give us the go?
Do we, did anyone have any really substantive?
Well, I put, I put a substantive one in.
One substantive that I would
Like you, my notes were written, so not submitted to Ed, but I don't have a great deal of them.
We do have two members that aren't gonna be at the next meeting.
Yes, I will not be at the next meeting.
Are you at the next one, April first?
Yeah.
Oh, you are. I thought you weren't.
No, I am.
Oh, good.
I, I mean,
But John, John, John submitted his edits.
My mistake.
He was not, he was on the good boy list.
Ed may never forgive me for that.
We can, we can push it and, okay, you guys can, the packet that were sent out, it's colored with red lines. Review those, if you have any edits, get them to me and we can get another one out, but
I am
Send it out to me, and I did not get a packet with red lines.
Okay, I can send you guys the word.
Yeah, cause I'll pull my
I, I got a Word document, but I did not get one with red lines.
Okay, okay, so I'll send you guys the word.
I even changed my ink and everything.
We will table that for now. And we will go to, uh, Acceptance Donation Community Nursing Fund in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
I move acceptance, thanks.
I, I will, I, I will note that he did follow it up with another donation on the next line we'll discuss. Well, on that, I mean, it's the whole
That ends the business. So administrative items. Uh, this is for a proxy property tax abatement for B and B. I believe this was correcting the mistake.
Interest, um, that accrued when the payment went to the wrong place.
Yeah, so there was a payment made on time, went into the wrong account.
No, it was miswritten.
Regardless, it was a mistake was made. A mistake was made, because of the mistake.
It went in the wrong
It went in the wrong account, and just accrued while they were late, even though they had made the payment.
Right, I just don't wanna fault our staff for having made the error.
Oh, no, all that's very, very clear. There was no nothing other than just a pure mistake. Um, so this is a request to abate the interest that accrued while it was in the wrong account.
I'll make a motion that we abate the interest that it grew while it was in the wrong account. So the money was there.
I'll second that completely and just make a, and just make a note, if I could, uh, that it's a one-time thing.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we are to public comments, any, uh, public comments?
No, we scared them all away.
Yeah, sure.
I just wanna say thank you. This was probably one of the most habitual workshops in meetings that I have been in the past year. I really appreciate hearing the acceptance of the videos, the thoughtful way that you approached things and the objections made. It was fabulous, so, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan. Good job, and glad to see the five feedback again. I'm lost, David.
I'll also echo that. I think this was a, a very productive meeting. It was able to be followed, um, except for a few of the land draft things that read your lawyer, lawyer request. Um, and I, you know, I, I think that even though, knocked it with some of you, um, earlier this, uh, this week, you know, last weekend, uh, I think that, you know, there's, uh, want to see this community continue to work together, was better, dear minister.
Thank you, David. Then, uh, any other business running agenda from the board? Okay, then we have a non-public session for town manager annual evaluation. Do you have the formal motion?
I will make a motion to enter non-public session in accordance with RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, Roman numeral two, small a, for town manager evaluation, and I'd like to do, I need to find the number for the other.
What is it for?
Um, uh, something that might adversely affect the, um, reservation. C, thank you, and small c.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we, we roll call your public, Kate?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.